It is now seven oh one.
And our clock has been adjusted properly.
It is now seven oh one.
It's 7:01, Apple time.
Excuse me, that.
Good evening, everybody, and I'd like to call the City Council for number 15, 2016 order. A note that all of our City Council members are present, and I'd like to ask everyone to rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we start to do this. Do we have a consent calendar? Can I get approval?
Of approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No passes? Why would move right along up to number four? So this is recognitions and presentations. Do you want to hear it? Okay. It's Lori again. There you are. You look different, got makeup on. There you go. Well, Lori Parker, come on up to the front.
Come on down.
Come on up. You earned this. How you doing? You seem more nervous now than you've ever before. Lori, come here. It's okay. Everything's gonna be good. You know, this is a real honor, okay? And it's not an honor that we're giving your proclamation. The honor is the acknowledgement of what you've done in your career, which is amazing. I mean, to be named one of the best teachers, I mean, out there is just amazing. There's so many teachers out there. In fact, you know, I'm coming to your dinner, okay? And I'm bringing my son, who's a school teacher, because I'm trying to inspire him. So it's gonna be fun, a fun night, Thursday night. But the City of Clayton would like to honor Lori Parker, who is here all the time, you know, to do our other presentations, with a proclamation declaring Thursday, November 17th, 2016, as Lori Parker Day. Whereas Lori Parker has been a dedicated teacher for the past 22 years, inspiring students from kindergarten through eighth grade, and whereas Mrs. Parker has brought her energy and commitment to her students to Diablo View Middle School for the past five years, sharing of love of English and history, and whereas Mrs. Parker instills in each of her students the confidence in their abilities and the will to succeed, encouraging and fostering a grit to never give up. I like that word, grit. Okay. Whereas Mrs. Parker is a valued member of Diablo View faculty, help to build a positive school culture and doing the right thing. And whereas Mrs. Parker, through her achievements and extraordinary commitment to the teaching profession, has been recognized as Teacher of the Year by the Warren E. Ugel Teacher Trust, whose mission is to foster excellence in education. Now therefore, I, Howard Gallo, the Mayor of the City of Clayton, California, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council, do hereby declare our pride in Lori Parker, commend her for numerous contributions into teaching and inspiration to her students, and do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 17th, 2016, as Lori Parker Day in the City of Clayton, California. Would you like to say something? Come on.
Thank, I don't, do I have to talk into that? Thank you so much. I am so honored. I don't even know what to say. Thank you so much. I don't know what else to say.
You know, it's funny, when she comes up here to talk about her students, she's got lots to say to talk about yourself. Just give me one second. I need to sign this.
Yeah, you know, it really was him signing it.
so we can, you know, do these kind of things.
Wasn't some machine in the background. Congratulations.
And we have certificate of resident recognition to Diablo View Middle School students for
We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. exemplifying do the right thing character trait of respect during the month of October.
Thank you. Glad to do it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So with that note, I'm gonna ask to come up here.
Congratulations.
There you go.
All right, now we're official.
First, we're gonna have Alyssa and Vince Pelosi. How you doing? You're not as nervous as Ms. Parker was. Yeah, I can tell you have it pretty well together. And we have some things nice to be said by your principal.
So I emailed Janet, and I said, can I have two for one? So she said, sure, because these two young people, Vince and Alyssa, are Pelosi, are twins. They're in our sixth grade class, and I've known them for a number of years because their mother actually works at Diablo View. So I've seen them growing up, and so we're delighted to have them as Diablo View students now. So one of their teachers told me, she says that Vince and Alyssa daily show acts of kindness in class. They're very happy children, always smiling, and always helping their peers. Both are active participants in class. They're constantly volunteering. They are leaders and positive role models. So when we're talking about respect, I was thinking of some students, and these are two very deserving students because they always have a smile on their face, and they always greet me, and I just know that all their teachers, when I ask them about them, have the same thing to say. But wonderful. So two for one, their parents should be very proud.
Kind of serious stuff, yeah. So the City of Clayton wants to recognize both of you, okay, with certificate of recognition, honoring Vince and Alyssa Pelosi for doing the right thing at Diablo View Middle School by exemplifying great respect, October 2016. That's pretty cool, huh? Yeah. We're gonna get you up here. Alexander Friedman? How you doing? Did I get that right on the first name? Oh, good. I practiced. I really did. Okay. So again, we're gonna have your principal and teacher talk a little bit.
Yes, Xander. So Xander's in eighth grade. I've known him since sixth grade, and I've been thinking of a young man who is always since sixth grade been most respectful. When I talk to his teachers, they say the same thing, that he's an excellent student, takes his studies very seriously. He is very kind and respectful to his peers as well as his teachers. So he's just a great all-around kid. But Mrs. Pelosi also has him.
So I had Xander in seventh grade last year and eighth grade this year, and I'll just echo what Mrs. Bannister said. He's extremely respectful, and I appreciate that we can always count on Xander to do the right thing. Happy to have him this year.
Well, Xander, we're gonna give you a certificate of, the City of Clayton's going to give you a certificate of recognition honoring Alexander Friedman for doing the right thing at Diablo View Middle School by exemplifying great respect, the month of October 2016. It's been, you know, I've been around for about eight years, and I noticed as the kids graduate and matriculate to the next school, what happens is they are coming up and getting certificates again and again, because these are the kids that are gonna make the leaders of our future. So really proud to do that. No, no, he'll be here, I could tell. Can I get the three recipients to come back up here? Xander? Come on back up here. Alyssa?
Right here. Just right here. Here's where it's.
There you go. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. There you go. Paper next to us.
Okay, thank you very much. Always the best part of any program that we have, when we can recognize our students for doing, exemplifying these great traits, and it's been a great program. At this point, we're gonna go to, we'll go to reports. The Planning Commission held no meetings, so there'll be no report. Trails and Landscaping Committee had no meeting, and we're gonna give it one second as the, I thought, wait a second, I thought, didn't you come to hear me on all the things we're gonna talk about tonight? No?
I heard you say matriculate, and they're out.
Golly, gee. Oh, beg sorry. Definitely worth it. We'll see ya. So we're gonna go to item 5C for City Manager and Staff for a report.
Oh, we had no meeting, Mr. Mayor, so nothing to report.
Nothing going on, man. Okay, we're gonna go to the City Council, and we'll start with Mr. Diaz, the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing much happened over the last two weeks.
All right, next. Next. Thank you.
It was quiet.
Thank you.
Seriously, but first of all, let me get the, yes, we had an election here in the city, and I'll thank those that supported myself, and I'll let council member or peer speak to that as well, but thank you very much. We were reelected to another four years, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with the city and the community in that capacity. Backing up a little bit, November 3rd, I went to and attended the 100 Club of Contra Costa County, and that's a group that recognizes the law enforcement community throughout the county, and they honor them and support them, particularly when the families are struck by the fact that unfortunately they lose a member of their family in the line of duty. It was well-attended. I was able to leave there, although it was way over in San Ramon, to get back and catch up at the latter portion of the Mayor's Conference, which Clayton's hosted on that 8th of November as well. Last Friday, attended the VFW Veterans Day Ceremony in Concord, which was a celebration of both Concord and Clayton for that day. Tremendous event, lot of spirit for the veterans of our community. That's all I have.
Julie?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the community for reelecting me to another four-year term. We are in the middle of great things here in Clayton, and are looking forward to another great four years. On the 19th of October, the day after our last meeting, I attended a Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting. It was far more upbeat than I suspect tomorrow night's will be.
Yeah.
Our Measure X unfortunately failed. We're still analyzing why, but that means not any additional money for capital projects over the next several years until we figure out how to do that. So we're on to Plan B, and many of us are now lobbying hard in Sacramento for them to get their act together and actually pass a transportation measure in the next two weeks. They literally have about 10 days to get things done. They have to have, because we passed a certain measure that requires them to have a bill in print for three days before they can vote on it, which we think is a good thing, it also means it slows down their process just a little bit. So we are working hard to make sure that they can muster the votes to get that through. They are one short in the Senate, so we are working with our local congressman to see if we can't be persuasive on that front. Anyway, the next night, had an Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Board meeting, and then, what did we do? Oh, the Cubs won the World Series. That's on my calendar. That was a good thing. MTC meetings, Transpac.
What role did you play in that?
What meeting did you have that put them over the top?
We escaped a few other meetings to watch the game. We had a Transpac meeting, Central County Transportation Partnership Committee, and we have, we are in the process of hiring a new Executive Director. We have negotiated it. We have a contract that will, after it clears Mala's approval, we'll be going to the Board for final adoption at our December meeting. So we are excited to have someone on board doing that job. Had, one, two, three, four, ABAG and MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Committee meetings, and I think that's it. Oh, we had a Mayor's Conference, didn't we? So, I don't know, I'm losing track. There's lots of meetings.
Thank you.
I didn't write them down this time.
Councilman Chewy.
You got the Cubs. All right, I wanna congratulate the Cubs.
Rogers.
I do want to say that, as always, Clayton residents turn out pretty well for elections, and congratulations to Jim and to Julie and to you. I am looking forward to a great transition. Howard has done an amazing job on the Council, and a lot of people will never know what he has done behind the scenes to help the city, but we know up here what a great job he's done, and we're gonna miss him, but Tuya is coming in, and you can never have too many lawyers.
Golly.
You can see Gary having an apple plexio there. We might have a few gerrymandering issues, but anyway, I wanted to congratulate you. Other than that, it was uneventful, so thank you.
Keith?
Well, certainly I wanna congratulate Jim and Julie and Tuya, a new member that will be joining us at our next meeting, and I want to encourage all residents here in Clayton and the surrounding area, actually, to come to our next meeting, but we will recognize Howard as the outgoing mayor and the wonderful job that he's done. So that will be a fun time for us to be able to recognize his achievements and say goodbye to him.
And kick him out.
And throw me out the door.
He's voluntarily leaving the Council. He's not being pushed out, so we appreciate that. Slow, a little slow for me as well, did go to the Mayor's Conference because it was held here in Clayton, and we were able to show off Oakhurst and the beautiful area. It was a beautiful night, so people were encouraged to go out on our wonderful balcony and get a beautiful view of the golf course and the sunset, and really turned a lot of people on to Clayton. We continue to say it's a hidden gem. We don't want the word to get out too far, but we do, we're certainly proud of it to show to people that come in to visit us. And then on Friday, on the 4th, actually had the Bachi League Summer League Finals, and I was one of the officials officiating the final match, and we had some excellent matches, some excellent players. Some of the teams overcame some of the other players on their team to go ahead and take the championship, and wanna share congratulations to Dave. Dave Chewy's team did win the championship.
I didn't wanna brag, I wanted to let Keith do it for me.
That was the Avengers. And a very tough game. In fact, all the matches leading in through the playoffs to get up there. We had some excellent teams. We had some teams that were seated down pretty low that actually got quite a ways into the finals to show that we do have some excellent Bachi players here in Clayton. Encourage people to come down, take a look at the games here at the courts just across the street next to Skip Fleeney's.
Tell them how we were the number one seed from the beginning to the end, though.
They did pan out the seeding that we gave them. They did feel they had to live up to that, and they did. They were pushed. It went to three games and a long third game, so they had to work for it, but they certainly achieved it, and it was worth it. And then also went with Mayor and Vice Mayor to the VFW Veterans Day Memorial there at Willow Pass Community Park. Always a very memorable ceremony, recognizing all veterans, and had a very nice six-gun salute, and some beautiful choral work by a high school women's chorus, and some very nice speeches. Our mayor gave a very nice speech, just a real nice way to remember how lucky we are to live here in America, and we owe a debt to our veterans for that. So it's a nice way to recognize that, so it kept us busy.
Thank you.
One comment, though, at that event, this is, they finally got the melody right to Anchors Away.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which they did in last year.
Yeah. Okay, so I get to speak last, and that's always good. One thing I'm proud of is that I voted, and I hope everyone in here voted, because the importance of voting, I always tell everybody, and they say, oh, you know, somebody else is gonna do it, says if you don't vote, you're letting somebody else make a decision for it. So we had a great turnout, and I like to go to the poll instead of just to talk to people and meet people, and it was a very positive atmosphere, you know, at the polls in Clayton. We did host the Mayor's Conference in Clayton, where we invite 19 other cities and Contra Costa counties to come, usually with their city managers, or we have congressmen, senators, assemblymen that attend. We showed a great show at the Oakhurst Country Club. We had a wonderful meal and some great hors d'oeuvres that we finally got to taste, and we had over 100 people attend that meeting, so it was really a nice meeting and a nice way to showcase Clayton again. I wanna congratulate Jim and Julie and Tuya for winning the election. These are, you know, our seasoned veterans are to my right here, and they definitely, you know, have a lot more on their, a lot more to offer, you know, in the next four years, and I'm sure they're gonna do a wonderful job as they have in the past. And Tuya has been on the Planning Commission for a long time. She left, went back to Iceland to live for a couple of years, came back, got back on the Planning Commission, and it's called being involved. Sometimes I wonder when, you know, somebody, you know, sometimes we get people that just run, but they're not involved. So I encourage, if you wanna get on the City Council, to get involved. There's, you know, the Planning Commission, the Trails and Landscaping Committee, there's lots of things that you can do in the city so people know who you are, and we get a chance to know who you are and what your character is when you're gonna run. So I encourage everyone to do that, and in two years, there'll be another election, so, you know, everyone has their chance to do that. I did attend the Veterans Day Memorial Service, the Veterans Day Service in Concord, and one of the explanations that I never thought about, there's a difference between Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Memorial Day is when we honor those that have passed away, and the Veterans Day is when we honor veterans. But, you know, after listening to the speakers, I think it's really hard to divide the two days or who you're honoring. I think it overlaps a lot, and it was a really wonderful service. They do this every year on Veterans Day. Clayton holds the Memorial Day Service downtown in Clayton on Main Street, and then Veterans Day is held in Concord, but if you haven't been to one of these things, it's definitely worth going, and, you know, we definitely should continue honoring our veterans and remember our soldiers that did not make it. I also attended the dedication for the memorial plaque, not plaque, monument that they put in honor of Concord High School students who lost their lives in combat. So this is a new program with the Blue Star Moms are putting together, and their Blue Star Moms are wonderful, just amazing what they have done over the years. It's a great organization nationally, and we have a wonderful chapter here. But if you go to Concord High in the entryway, there's about a four-foot, three, four-foot memorial, beautiful stone memorial with a wonderful plaque listing the names of our Clayton, Concord residents that passed away in service, giving us the freedom, you know, that we well deserve, and we wanna continue. So that was a very moving thing, and again, they had the Concord Girls Assembly singing, and what a great, great group of girls. I mean, they really do very well. Again, I just wanna mention one thing, on November 17th, on Thursday, I'll be attending the Warner Luke Teachers Trust Dinner, where this is a couple that gave this large sum of money, and what they do is they recognize the best of the best teachers in the county. And only three teachers were picked in Contra Costa County for this, and each teacher will be honored, and it's a $10,000 stipend that they get, which is a nice acknowledgement for their hard work. So I think that's a really nice thing to do. Last but not least, I wanna congratulate the Avengers for winning first place, and make a note that every team has one designated person that just comes and brings the beer because they don't want him to play. And I don't wanna say who that person might be, but I can tell you, when we played that team, he threw two balls and took himself out because he was worried about the results. And I will end the comments on that. Thank you. Moving along. Okay, we're gonna open this up.
How about them Cubs, Mayor?
Hold on, I'm revising my speech for the next council meeting.
Okay, public comment. We're gonna have a public comment on non-agended items. Does anyone wish to speak on a non-agended item? Gosh, I'm curious, everybody's back there, okay? So we're gonna close the public comment part of this and open up our public hearing. Item number eight, public hearing to consider the introduction and first reading of the proposed city initiative ordinance number 470, updating the Clayton Municipal Code Title 17, zoning section 17.80, water conserving landscape guidelines concerning city water efficient landscaping standards and regulations per state mandate, and we're gonna go to that to Cindy. Mindy. Mindy.
Cindy, Mindy, Milan.
It rhymes, it's all right.
I wasn't sure which one's gonna get it. Okay, Milan. It says Milan. I want you to.
Oh, wow.
That's why, when I looked, I said.
It said Milan, that's why he said Cindy.
Is that better?
It's easy to understand.
All right, and let's move on. These are really dirty.
That's your excuse.
Okay.
All right, well, good evening, thank you very much. So this item on the agenda is in regards to amending the Clayton Municipal Code in order to comply with state law as it pertains to landscape water conservation. To provide a little bit of background, in September 2010, the City of Clayton adopted an updated water conservation ordinance in response to the State Water Conservation Landscaping Act of 2006, which is also known as AB 1881. The state ordinance required all new and rehabilitated landscapes to be designed and installed to meet the latest and best practices for water efficiency use. All cities and counties in California were required to adopt the state ordinance as written or develop their own ordinance that was at least as effective in conserving water. Generally, the thresholds established in the state ordinance apply to irrigated landscape areas of 2,500 square feet or greater for developer-initiated and public projects, and 5,000 square feet or greater for owner-initiated single-family residential projects. So following a declared state of emergency, Governor Brown issued Executive Order B-29-15, which ordered the Department of Water Resources to update the state model water-efficient landscape ordinance. The executive order called for revising the model ordinance to increase water efficiency standards for new landscapes as well as retrofitted landscapes, gray water usage, onsite storm water capture, and by limiting the portion of landscapes that can be covered in turf. The model ordinance also requires jurisdictions to report on the implementation and enforcement of the local ordinance. So I'd like to cover, just kinda go over briefly what the significant changes are to the ordinance. It ended up establishing lower thresholds, so projects previously that were 2,500 square feet or larger for developer and public-initiated projects, the threshold has now been lowered to 500 square feet. All cities and counties in California were required to adopt the state ordinance as written or develop their own ordinance that was at least as effective in conserving water. Generally, the thresholds established in the state ordinance apply to irrigated landscape areas of 2,500 square feet or greater for developer-initiated and public projects, and 5,000 square feet or greater for owner-initiated single-family residential projects. So following a declared state of emergency, Governor Brown issued Executive Order B-29-15, which ordered the Department of Water Resources to update the state model water-efficient landscape ordinance. The executive order called for revising the model ordinance to increase water efficiency standards for new landscapes as well as retrofitted landscapes, gray water usage, onsite storm water capture, and by limiting the portion of landscapes that can be covered in turf. The model ordinance also requires jurisdictions to report on the implementation and enforcement of the local ordinance. So I'd like to cover, just kind of go over briefly what the significant changes are to the ordinance. It ended up establishing lower thresholds. So projects previously that were 2,500 square feet or larger for developer and public-initiated projects, the threshold has now been lowered to 500 square feet. And for new owner-directed single-family residential, the threshold has been lowered from 5,000 square feet to 500 square feet. And then those rehabilitated landscapes that are owner-directed, single-family residential has been lowered from 5,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Gray water systems are now allowed per the California Building Code. Local jurisdictions are also required to report to the Department of Water Resources on the implementation and enforcement of the local ordinance. The reduction of the maximum applied water allowance reduces the number of high-water use plants such as turf. So as far as landscape design, turf cannot exceed 25% of the landscape area for residential uses, and no turf is allowed in non-residential projects. No turf is allowed also in medians or in areas actually narrower than 10 feet. Compost must also be incorporated into the soil prior to planting at a rate of four yards per 1,000 square feet, and the mulch depth has been increased from two inches to And then as far as irrigation systems go, dedicated landscape water meters or sub-meters are required for residential landscapes over 5,000 square feet and non-residential landscapes over 1,000 square feet. Pressure regulators, flow sensors, and master shut-off valves are also now required. And the adoption of the Landscape Water Conservation Standards Ordinance is exempt from CEQA because pursuant to CEQA guidelines, this ordinance involves procedures for the protection of the environment and will assure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, or protection of the natural resources. So with that, staff is recommending the City Council motion to have the city clerk read the ordinance, read ordinance number 470 by title and number only in way for the reading. And following the reading of the title, motion to approve ordinance number 470 for introduction to amend the Clayton Municipal Code Landscape Water Conservation Standards to comply with state law. And that concludes my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Anyone with questions up here? Questions?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yeah, I actually do. I've got to find my notations here. They're down here a ways.
Right under Cubs.
Yeah, it might be. Down here, it talks about the landscape water audit requirements in the ordinance. Who is the landscape auditor? Is that a city staff member? Is that somebody else? Is that somebody?
It depends on the project. So if it's going to be a city-initiated project, maintenance would have the ability to do that. If it's a developer-initiated project or a single-family homeowner project, then they would have to possibly hire someone if it's warranted, that is certified as an auditor to perform the actual audit.
So we would be charging a fee for this, for compliance, to make sure that that gets paid for, right? Or is that something that is billed to us or billed to the homeowner?
The homeowner would provide us with that information.
Okay, okay. And then down on the bottom or the middle of page 14 of the Red Line Strikeout Ordinance, it talks about the public education and signage, and this is on model homes. Is that going to be permanent signage? Is that temporary signage while they're for sale? Is that? What is that?
The intent would just to be during, during the sale of the homes, it wouldn't be permanent signage.
Okay. I was going to say, that's going to start to look really tacky. We've got signs all over the city for every installation that goes up that this complies with XY Water Act. Okay. Yeah, those were the ones I caught right off the top. I think this is great, and as I looked at it and read through it, I felt comforted that when we personally did our redo of our landscape, we actually complied with every bit of it and it was two years ahead. So that's good.
Andy?
I just had a clarification, and this just applies to new developments going forward and/or redesign of existing properties, correct?
No one has to go back and make sure that they comply with that for existing landscaping?
No, it's not to, yeah. It's just for new development.
Don't want to panic the public. It just applies going forward.
Yes.
So, Mindy, can you explain that a little bit more detail? So if I have my lawn now and I'm going to reseed my lawn, or I'm going to redo some landscaping around part of my house, does that mean that because I'm redoing something, I have to comply with the statute all through?
If you are going to exceed the threshold, so in this particular case, it would be, I believe it was 500 square feet, then you would hopefully come down to the city to make sure that you are complying. But it's really only going to be when there's a building permit or some other type of discretionary review or ministerial review involved.
Right. We don't have people coming in because we're going to put some bushes in and landscaping at this point.
No.
Good, okay. Just for clarification. Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing. If we have no more questions here, and anyone else would like to comment on that public hearing? Nothing from the public? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And council discussion? Any amendments or anything to that? We get a motion to have the city clerk read?
I would move to have the city clerk read ordinance number 470 by title and number only in way for the reading.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? No.
Ordinance number 470, an ordinance amending the Clayton Municipal Code Chapter 17.80 Landscape Water Conservation Standards. I would further move to approve ordinance number 470 for introduction to amend the Clayton Municipal Code Landscape Water Conservation Standards to comply with state law, ZOA 0716.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And this, the finding of this action does not constitute a project under CEQA?
Right.
Okay. So we're going to move to item number seven, B. Public hearing to review and consider the following actions for the St. John's Episcopal Church on Southbrook Drive Mixed-Use Plan Development Project consisting of three-lot subdivision for two single-family homes, APN 118, 101, 022. And with that, Mindy, you're not Mindy.
Go to Cindy.
So now we're going to do something on this. So we're going to just, I'm just calling you both Cindy tonight. If you can't get your name straight, you just be Cindy. That's it. That's the name for it. Milan?
Yes.
Take it away, Milan.
Thank you, Mayor Geller, and council members. Welcome to city staff and members of the public. So our second public hearing tonight, I'll keep this as short as I can, is a seven entitlement request for the St. John's Episcopal Church, Southbrook Drive Mixed-Use Plan Development Project, which entails environmental, general plan amendment, rezone, development plan, tentative map, site plan review, and tree removal permit. I'm sure the council is familiar with this site. There it is in red, Clayton Road here, Southbrook Drive on the north. It has two frontages, one on Clayton Road, one on Southbrook Drive. There's an existing church, the St. John's Episcopal Church here, with some ancillary buildings and an 82 parking lot, 82 space parking lot here. And then the northern end, there's the sort of an undeveloped, kind of a hillside or a sloped area that fronts onto Southbrook Drive. And so just going over quickly, the entitlements in more, a little more detailed, environmental review entails an initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program, which was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And then the general plan amendment is a request for that northern area I'd mentioned, the undeveloped portion facing Southbrook Drive to, and that's a 0.41 acre area, so just slightly under a half acre. They're going to do two lots there, but total of both lots combined is just under a half acre. They are proposing to change the northern portion from institutional density to single-family medium density. The rezone would entail changing the entire project site, all of the church and the two lots, from agricultural to planned development. Development plan would then allow the council to review the development standards and the uses proposed for the site. The tentative map involves splitting the existing 2.77 acre church property into three parcels, which, as I'd mentioned, will contain the existing church parcel plus the two newly-formed, if approved, two newly-formed, single-family residential lots. Each one measuring, one is about 8,100 square feet and the other one about 9,600 square feet. The remaining church lot would be 2.36 acres in area. Also, site plan review permit to review the architecture and design of the two proposed residences, as well as the landscaping, fencing, and retaining walls proposed for the project. Lastly, the tree removal permit to remove seven of the 10 trees, and they will be replaced with new trees, shrubs, and ground covers. So here's the site, currently all institutional density. And so what they're proposing is that northern perimeter, that northern area there, to go to medium density. So this would remain institutional density, the northern area, medium density. And then looking at the zoning, it's currently agricultural. And looking at the proposed zoning, then that would just change to PD. There's the two lots at the top. So will staff analyze this for compliance with existing surrounding general plan land use designations and zoning classifications? And around the, the general plan uses around the site would be low-density, pretty much surrounding it on three sides, northwest and east. There's a low-density residential, excuse me, rural estate area here to the northeast, and then there's a higher-density area here for Westwood Project, the Westwood subdivision. Just south of the project, across the street in Concord, doesn't show on the map, they do also have church uses and office uses. So staff analyzed that and felt that the medium density, and so did the Planning Commission, the medium-density area would comply and be compatible with the existing land, the low-density and other land use designations. Looking at the zoning, it's R12 surrounding, again, on northwest and east sides. You have an R40H to the northeast and a PD to the west. The agricultural zone, staff felt and the Planning Commission concurd that that was something that could have a holdover from a previous time in Clayton's history. Uses, agricultural uses there would not be compatible with the surrounding existing residential areas. So the PD would allow for some flexible zoning, allowing the church and the two proposed single-family residences. And then so looking, here's a little close-up of the site. You know, we have the church property here at the bottom. If I can get the red pointer to work here. There it is. So here's your church, your ancillary buildings, your 82 space parking lot. Again, Clayton Road's at the bottom here in the south, Southbrook Drive at the top. And so here are the two proposed lots. We'll get a little close-up on those. And so this is Lot A, the smaller lot, the 8,168 square foot, and Lot B, 9,624 square feet. Each of them are proposed with a single-family residence. And so I'm going to go to how it looks now, and I think some of us are familiar with that, and there's that sloped area. And here's what they're proposing, so the two homes. And I will go into some of the details here. Regarding the general plan amendment, going back to that for a minute, the housing element, and I know that some of the council may be familiar with this, the Association of Bay Area Governments allocates to the City of Clayton a regional housing needs allocation total of 141 housing units, for which the city's 2015 to 2023 housing element identifies a citywide capacity of 275 units. So that would be a surplus of 134 units above and beyond the 141 RENA, as it's called, RHNA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So the RENA of 141 is surpassed by 134 more units, again, for a total of 275. The housing element identifies the entire project site is underdeveloped and assigned at a realistic unit capacity of 42 units. So while this northern 0.41 acre portion of the subject property includes a general plan amendment to a less-dense residential designation, there's still adequate capacity citywide to accommodate the city's RENA. The remaining 2.36 acre portion, which the existing church, by the way, there'll be no change to the church parcel, I want to mention that, but that existing, remaining 2.36 acre portion of the subject property could be utilized for future housing development as identified by the general plan land use designation. The realistic unit capacity, as assumed in the city's housing element for the remaining church area, is 37 units, with the inclusion of the two proposed homes ringing the total of the project site to 39 units, assuming approval, of course, of the general plan amendment. This is a decrease of a total of three units from the assumed realistic capacity of 42 units, which still leaves the city an overall capacity of 272 units, which, again, as I'd mentioned, is a surplus of 131 units above and beyond the required RENA amount. Therefore, the proposed project, including the general plan amendment, would not conflict with the city's general plan, including the 2015 to 2023 housing element due to there still being adequate capacity to accommodate the RENA.
Breathe.
Looking at the development plan, open space. Our open space code sections requires that 20% of the project be dedicated, 10% active, 10% passive, 20% total be dedicated to open space. As a result of these requirements, and given the small size of the project, there's three choices. The project, the proposed project would be required to acquire and dedicate off-site land for open space, number one. Number two, make an in lieu contribution for the dedication and/or maintenance of open space. And number three, or if the financial contributions are based upon maintenance costs, such contributions shall be based upon reasonable maintenance costs for a 10-year period and shall be proportional to the land area that would be required if open space area was provided on site. So in summary, staff has provided a condition that developers shall comply with the open space requirements and shall enter into an agreement with the city regarding the open space requirements of the project. Looking at the development standards, staff analyzes vis-à-vis the existing R12 standards. And R12 currently, front setbacks are 20, rear 15, sides are 10 minimum for a total of 25, and those same development standards were assigned to the project. And so it does comply. Regarding the tentative map, and I'll go to that here. Well, we know what the whole thing looks like. Let me get a close-up here, something a little clean we can look at. They're going to do a shared driveway here. If I can get the red pointer to work, there we go. So here's your sheer Southbrook Drive at the north end, kind of up here. Then the shared driveway is going to come in and service each of the residences, as you can see. Staff did provide a condition that four minimum off-street parking spaces are provided, two covered, two uncovered. And the two covered obviously be in the garage. Section 1612 of the CMC requires all new subdivisions to dedicate land, pay a fee in lieu thereof, or both, for park and recreational purposes. Therefore, a condition has been provided requiring payment of parkland dedication fees at the time of the filing of the final map. Looking at the grading for the site, we'll go quickly here to this cross-section. So Southbrook Drive's here. The sidewalk on Southbrook Drive is 322 feet above sea level, and the graded pad is 330 feet. So that's an eight-foot difference. And it's maybe hard to see, I'm not sure if the council can see it there, but there's a, my red pointer, my red pointer, somewhere down there. But anyway, you can see the existing slope kind of cutting across, and they're going to obviously level out the pads to build the homes on. And so looking at utilities, water and sewer is provided in Southbrook Drive for which laterals will be provided, and the project will comply with all applicable stormwater requirements. Bio-retention areas have been provided on each lot. And so condition, it is conditioned to be in accordance with our city engineer's review and approval of the stormwater-related aspects, as well as in compliance with the state C3 stormwater requirements. We'll go to the architecture and the staff's opinion and with the city council's, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission's inference. We felt that the architecture was highly articulated, a lot of visual interest. They're actually proposing two different sightings. This is the home on Lot A, so they got vertical there, a lot of pop-out step-ins. You can see a lot of visual interest, and they did make good use on the sides of the home. This is the side-facing west on Lot A, and then Lot B also. Here's the side-facing east. What they did is to be mindful of the neighboring property's privacy. They only put one second-story window on both those sides, which staff and the commission felt was definitely a good move. But as you can see, there's not a bad elevation on there. Some people sometimes will give you the beauty contest on the front end, and then the back side will have some flat monolithic facade. That is not the case with these homes. They articulated all four sides excellently. And so there's the floor plans, and they're using very natural coloring, some lane scotting there as well, comp shingle roofing, and you can see the colors, although the duplication on this may not be entirely accurate, but they are using earth-toned colors, you can see, and they're mixing it up a bit. So there's Lot A's colors, Lot B, moving things around, providing some visual interest. Here's how the homes are proposed to look. That's a photo sim that is out of the environmental document. And so definitely a benefit to that area over this. And they are removing, by the way, that retaining wall, this existing wood retaining wall here, putting some staircases in. They're going to have a retaining wall at the back end of the property. I'll go to that quickly. So the retaining wall will run along the back end here and kind of wrap around there. There are going to be some fences proposed as well. Staff's provided a condition that they work with their neighbors on providing some side-yard fencing just to blend a little better, since those existing fences were somewhat dilapidated. So moving on, moving to the landscaping aspect. By the way, staff did review for setbacks, building footprint, floor area requirements. They do comply with all those. And COAs have been provided addressing installation and maintenance of the landscaping right-of-way. And COAs have been provided addressing installation and maintenance of the landscaping right-of-way, and also with the city's landscape water conservation standards, which the council just reviewed. And regarding the landscaping overall, applicant made good use of accent trees, Japanese maple, red bud, crape myrtle, along with shrubs, ornamental grasses, and ground covers, a good mix overall. Regarding the tree removal permit, staff has provided COAs that additional replacement trees be provided in compliance with the replacement requirements of the municipal code. And so, in conclusion, the engineer did review and provide conditions, and we did receive comments from the fire protection district. Also, we did receive one public comment, which was provided as attached to twelve in the staff report, from a concerned neighbor who was in opposition to the homes. Lastly, physical impact is not anticipated, the approval of this project will not result in direct physical impact to the city. Developers required to pay the impact fees pertaining to community facilities, development, off-site arterial improvements, childcare, parkland dedication, possible open space in lieu, and fire development protection fees. These impact fees are to offset costs associated with the infrastructure. Further, the city will collect property taxes on the two new homes, which will assist in offsetting a portion of ongoing city operation costs. So, in conclusion, staff recommends firstly, now, with the seven entitlements, there is the environmental, the general plan, and the rezone all have their own documents, two resos and an ordinance, respectively, and then the last four entitlements, the development plan, site plan review permit, tree removal permit, and tentative map will all have their own rezo. So four documents total, although seven entitlements. So the first recommendation would be a motion to approve a city council resolution adopting the St. John's Church, Southbrook Drive, mixed-use development project initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program. Next, the next motion would be to approve a city council resolution adopting a general plan amendment for the zero-point-four-one acres of the project site from institutional density to single-family medium density. The next would be a sort of a two-part, as we just had done on the previous public hearing, for the resolution, for, excuse me, the rezone, the ordinance would be the first motion to have the city clerk read city council ordinance number four-seven-one by title and number only, and waive further reading, and, following the clerk's reading, motion to approve city council ordinance number four-seven-one, rezoning the project site from agricultural district to planned development district. And then lastly, that's that sort of all-encompassing resolution that would deal with the final four entitlements. The last recommendation by staff is a motion to approve a city council resolution approving the development plan, tentative parcel map, site plan review permit, and tree removal permit for the St. John's Episcopal Church, Southbrook Drive, mixed-use planned development project. That concludes our presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Very nicely done.
Boy, Malone.
He did that without taking a breath.
I tried to give him a prompt, but excellent job.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Maximum words.
Okay, any, any questions up here first, before we open up a public hearing?
Yes. I, I actually have two questions, one on process, and then one on the plan itself. Process-wise, I under, I would assume under item three, A and B, we are introducing the ordinance first, we're not approving it, we're, we're approving a motion to introduce the ordinance, then it will be approved at the next meeting, is that correct?
Correct, thank you for that clarification, yes, that is correct.
I just was trying to remember, and I was racking my brain and thinking, I don't think we did this last time. So, okay, very good. The, the question on the plan itself, I know that the C-3 requirements require bio-retention areas, and I can't find that on the map, where are they?
Bio-retention areas are in the upper right and left corners, which probably wouldn't make any sense, so I'll go here to the over.
So in there, they're in the back of the lot?
No, they're in the front, they're going to be here in the north.
Down by the street?
Yes, the northwest corner of Lot A, northeast corner of Lot B, and the reason is because of the slope of the property, water, whatnot, will naturally drain to the north towards Southbrook Drive.
That made sense to me, but I, I just couldn't find it on the map. So how are those going to be done? Are those just going to be swales that are planted to retain and allow the, the water to percolate back into the, the ground there?
Yes, my understanding is that the city engineers work closely with the applicant, and my understanding is they're going to have a, a layer of percolation material, and so the water will can be filtered, perhaps cleaned a bit, and then as it gets percolated back into the ground from whence it came. I mean, the idea of it, as you, as you obviously are familiar with, is to keep water from flowing off-site.
Yeah.
Especially sheet-flowing, that's what we definitely avoid.
No, I, I get that totally, I was just trying to figure out where it actually was, because the landscape plan looked so pretty, that it didn't look like it had a spot for it to be actually retained, and I'm very, very familiar with bioswales, I have a rather soggy one out in front of my house right now. So, yeah, wonderful. Good job on presentation, by the way.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very well done.
Any other comments up here, gentlemen, come as?
Questions, yes, I also want to add to that, very detailed plans and description and presentation, so, thank you very much, just have a few questions. You answered one, I believe, and that, it's about eight feet up from the street, the base of the home, so there is rise there, and the driveway will go up then and level out, and then there's a retaining wall in the back?
Yes.
And how high is that retaining wall then?
That would be approximately about six and a half feet, six to six and a half feet at the tallest point, and then as it wraps, it'll be tallest to the middle of the back, and I'll go here, it'll be tallest here, and then as it wraps around, it'll reduce in height, where it'll eventually just flow into the ground, so to speak, but it'll shrink down in height and taper downward.
So it'll carry that around then, to the corner with the side walls as well?
Yes.
Because it will be dug into the slope a bit, in the back there?
Yes, absolutely, and, and I did provide this rendering, which may or may not assist. This is not the actual design of it, this is just more for the architectural colors and the style. They're not going to be doing a three-tiered system, and there's not going to be a massive fence at the back like this, there'll be the existing, very low, I think it's two- or three-foot fence on the back of the north end of the church property, and then they're just going to have one facade. This is much taller, what they're showing here, but this is more for the colors and kind of the design of the, of the architectural treatments.
Yeah, that did look larger than the six, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, it definitely won't be that tall, no, this is, yeah.
And you indicated that the developer would work with the existing property owners on the sides, would they be replacing the existing fence with new fencing?
Either-or, they'll either work with them and replace the existing fence, or if the neighbors say, no, I like my old fence, it looks great, then they'll be required to put up new fencing, like a good neighbor fence right next to it.
Okay. And what is the side setback on those properties?
Side setback for the, for the homes?
Yes.
Would be a minimum of fifteen, well, it depends, the aggregate total is twenty-five feet, so the technical minimum is ten, but you'd have to make up fifteen on the other side to make that minimum twenty-five total, so it just depends how much they have on either side. So they, if they have fifteen on the side facing the driveway, they could go down to ten on the sides facing the existing homes.
But as far as the way the footprint currently exists, or is being proposed on the property, what's the approximate setback?
The existing, or the, you mean the existing, the existing homes next door, or the proposed?
No, the, what's being proposed?
The what's being proposed, let's see here, that would be, the, the lowest side setback would be fifteen feet. On Plan A, that would be on the west side, so I'll go back, I think this is the most clear rendering, right there. So the west side of Plan A, right here, fifteen, the east side of Plan B, right here, fifteen. So that's the closest on the side property lines, or to the side property lines. And then the interior, Plan A will be seventeen to the driveway, and then Plan B will be fif, fifteen, excuse me, no, seventeen also. So they're both the same, they're both seventeen feet from the driveway, and then fifteen feet from the side property lines, total of thirty-two feet.
Then just one other question, I did see that letter that was received, that raised a question about potential impacts on traffic. Did staff analyze that?
It's analyzed in the environmental document, but two homes, we're looking at nominal traffic increase, but yes, there was a.
As far as a blind corner or something?
Actually, the city engineer will be working with the applicant to make sure they comply with the line-of-sight regulations, which is twelve feet back from the edge of the driveway. So here, there's a twelve-foot by twelve-foot triangle, on, it's kind of an upside-down triangle, I guess, but they have to make sure they have nothing taller than, I believe, thirty inches in that area, so that as cars are coming out or going in, they can kind of see what's coming. So they, there is a condition for that, for the line-of-sight requirements.
Okay, because they're coming down that slope.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, that's all my questions.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned a two-foot fence in the back of the lot, sitting on the top of the slope, so that means from the church's parking lot, there'll be a two-foot fence?
There's already an existing fence out there.
I mean, but usually the fences are six-foot high for, for security and, and privacy.
Right.
If you have a two-foot fence, I can stand in the parking lot, I'll be looking in their backyard.
You, exactly, you probably could. The fence there that's existing now, I don't know if it's two feet, maybe three feet, it's really, it's a very low fence.
Right, but there's a low fence there, because there's no building on the other side, there's not a need for privacy, you know, so that would be a concern of mine, that, you know, you don't have a privacy fence in your backyard?
Right.
Okay, where anyone driving in, in the parking lot will be able to see over.
And look down into those.
Right, look down in there, and, and also, you can step over a two-foot fence very easily, you have to climb over a six-foot fence.
Right.
I think that's something that needs to be addressed?
Sure.
Or a minimum of five-foot fence on, on the back wall.
At the council's pleasure, we could add a condition, absolutely.
You know, for, for, just for security, line-of-sight, looking in, you know, at least five, probably six-foot fence would be, you know, applicable, okay. And you also mentioned two extra parking spots, I'm looking at the plan itself, I see the driveway, and I see kind of this towhead type thing that you got by the garages, and I, I can't see the dimensions on, on here very well. So, does that leave me enough room to park my car and not park it in the garage, and just leave it in the driveway?
Absolutely, the garages are here, and that's something else I wanted to mention, is that they've sort of tucked them back from the street, which I think is great, because you can't see them at all from the street. Yes, I'll have the two spaces on the inside of the garage, and then I'll have this area here.
Yeah.
These areas, I should say, and then there's also this area down here.
Oh.
They're going to be working with the fire district, there's some, I don't want to say outstanding issues, but there's some discussion that's going to need to occur between the applicant and the fire protection district, because the fire protection district reviewed this project twice, actually, and they sent the same letter both times, and I talked to my contact there, and he said that he would have to work with the applicant, because I think the fire district initially thought that was an access easement, like a street.
Right.
It's really more of a shared driveway, so there's some gray area there, wiggle room. The engineer also initially was requiring a little more regulation, say, on it, to put, put it in a nutshell, but, and he's pulling back from that a bit as well, to allow a little more flexibility out there. But, yeah, there are, is space, to answer your question, there is space for two cars to park outside.
Outside, and not, not by the garage door, further back, I, I just noticed that little area.
Right.
Basketball court to me.
Okay, looks like a good basketball court. And that's not required as a tow-out for emergency vehicles to turn around, because it's not a, a street, and not a dead-end street, it's a driveway shared.
Exactly, and my understanding is, I found out recently that the distance of fire hoses would be able to, they would park, and they could park on, in the street, in Southbrook Drive, and wrap around the homes at least a couple times, I just, that just came to my attention recently. So there's, there's adequate access for fire vehicles.
And, and the width of the driveway?
They're requiring a twenty-foot minimum width, but there, again, some gray area, they could go down to sixteen feet where it necks down, you know, here, and then they could have a two-foot overhang on either side, but the applicant's going to work with the fire district on that, because there's a little gray area, again. I think the fire district maybe thought this was more of a street, not just the shared driveway, so, but yes, sixteen to twenty feet, basically, is the.
All right, and currently, there's no access from Clayton Road to Southbrook going through the church property?
No, none at all.
Just clarity, okay.
Yeah.
So we're not changing the flow of everything, okay. All right, that, that covers my questions.
Can I just tag on to your comment?
Sure.
The, I would just point out that, having walked several neighborhoods during the most recent campaign, and distributed flyers up to various doorsteps, we have precedent for this kind of a driveway all over the place, in Oakhurst in particular, for shared driveways and hammerheads that go into garages that face each other with turnaround space, and then there's a, a minimum required area that has to be left open, so people can back out and turn. And I would think that in, and you've probably talked about this, but I didn't see it in the planning commission comments, I would think that the areas that David's talking about being the basketball court would be the place that the extra cars might park, and, and that would allow people to back all the way up to the neighbor's garage door to be able to turn around. And, and that area being mandated to be kept clear might be a condition that ought to go into someplace. I mean, we don't have a homeowners association here, or do we, for the maintenance of the...
No, no homeowners association is proposed, each private property owner would be required to maintain.
His extension basin?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, so it, you know, that's just something that, that the developer is probably going to want to, to talk to the homeowners about, or they're going to have to work it out, but that is one of the requirements I know that we have in the places in Oakhurst, where it's tight like that, down there in the duets and some of those, we require that central area between the garage doors to be kept open, so that people can navigate in and out, and actually turn around on the site without having to back out. But I, I think it looks fabulous, I'm, I'm tickled, and having lived in Westwood at the end of this street, only a few houses away, I think it will add tremendously to the atmosphere and the, and the look of that neighborhood, I, I think it's really going to be a nice addition. And I, I appreciate the, the modifications and the sensitivity for windows, having been in that situation myself in the past, I think this is very tasteful, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, well, that's all the comments up here, so I'm going to open up for a public, a public hearing, for public comment. You got to gum up to the microphone to speak now, okay? Just state your name and, you know, where you live, kind of like, so we have it.
Fill out a speaker card after.
I can fill out a speaker card.
My, my name is Vidal, we live, we're five-five-five-zero, so we're just.
Yeah, pull it up.
There you go. So we're just adjacent, so first of all, thank you for the hard work and all the details, and the church also talked to all of us over the years, so we appreciate that. And I have three questions. First question is, which trees are going to take out, are all the trees in that neighborhood, in that lot, are going to take out, or will they be, I think there's like one oak tree, and hopefully some of those trees will be left?
Yes, they're removing seven of the ten trees, and they are leaving the oak tree.
The oak tree that's adjacent to our house will be left, okay?
Some of the others are pretty sad.
They are, I have no problem, I just love that tree, and.
Yeah, the oak tree.
I want them there, so, just double-check.
So yes, they will be leaving all three valley oaks.
Okay, perfect. My second question, there is a slope, and I see that they're going to do some gradient, and are they going to take into account outside, so if they make our area, it's not in this picture, because on the other one, there's a slope, so hopefully that would be taken into account, so there won't be difference in, in, in levels between our side and the new homes. So I don't know, I'm willing to work with the contractor, and we waited with our, our fence, we didn't touch it, so. My, my last question is, that whole area, I don't know if anybody, and you said you walked through that area, it's full of wildlife, are we just going to do anything about all those, or we just going to flatten it out, and whoever's there is, is gone? I mean, I don't know if you got, I mean, for me, it's bad, because I've tried to go some tomatoes, and they steal them.
What, what kind of wildlife?
There's all kinds, there's birds living in there, there's squirrels running in there, if you ever walk and just look around, it's very bubbly, I mean, you can't really walk, it's not really safe to walk there, because there's a lot of holes in the ground, but it would be kind of, I don't know if we're going to do anything about that, and moving them, or whatever, or we just, because once we're going to come in there, it'll be, if we're going to fix.
Well, we're going to have an adoption program for the neighbors?
I don't want them, I just, I was just wondering if somebody's thinking about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, right? But, but you know what happens when, when, when builders come in, and the trucks come in, you know, you're going to see a lot of little critters with their suitcases, and they're going to go find another home.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you ever look, I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot going on in that area, which has kind of been abandoned over the past few years, and, I don't know, so.
It's going to be a major improvement.
For us, it will be, for them, it won't be.
Any, any other public speakers? And could you, can you please fill out, sir, would you fill out, in the back, there's a speaker card, so we can get your name and address, because we need that for public
a speaker card, so we can get your name and address, because we need that from public record, and just fill it, turn it into the clerk, and sir, can you state your name?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, city council members, uh, my name is Joe Rhodes, and I live at thirty-three Marquette Court in Clayton, and I, I, I need to tell you, my heart leapt a little bit when I, when I saw the rendering here, because the fence on the right is my property, and, uh, those windows, um, although I, I, I have talked with the contractor, I think at the initial meeting at the church, uh, those windows look right down into my backyard, and I do have one tree in my backyard, but, uh, my backyard has all windows facing, uh, the house faces out to the backyard, our bedroom, uh, living room has a bay window, big bay window with no curtains on a bay window, uh, and I'm just curious, uh, obviously it's gonna change my sightline a little bit, but I can live with that, I understand, it's just somebody going over their window and looking down and seeing me walk through my house in less than street clothing, you know?
So, so you, you said that most of your windows are in the back of the house, that's the side of the house?
Bedroom window.
So is, is your side of the house, is your back of the house their side?
Yes, my house is on, uh, Marquette.
Oh, so it goes, oh, the other way, gotcha, gotcha.
My house runs to the side.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, right.
That tree, it was right there, where you see the cedar fence.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, that tree is on my property, I believe.
The back end of your property?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
And my property is significantly lower.
Right, right.
Than, it's probably, I don't know, six, seven feet lower than the, the property line, uh, like the base of the current fence is probably, that's on my back property, between this property, the, the new house property, and mine is probably five feet above the base where my house is. So that window is, mm, twenty feet above the base of where my house is, looks down in, in my office, looks down in my bedroom, and looks down in the.
In your backyard.
In your backyard, yeah. Yeah, in the whole backyard, but also in my living room, family room with a big bay window.
Can I make a suggestion on that, um, it's something that we've dealt with over a period of time in this very neighborhood, um, goes back actually into nineteen eighty-seven, where I faced exactly what you're talking about, and the solution we came up with at that time was to make the windows on that side clerestory windows, so they're high windows, they let in lots of light into that room, but they're above eye level in that room, so you're not.
Looking down.
You're not looking down on the neighbor, but you have that open feel, and it looks to me like there's plenty of room, that is what appears to be a great room, I think.
When I met with the contractor, and I voiced my concern, he said it was a playroom, and he didn't, at that time, and this was months ago, in very initial planning stage, he said he didn't think it would be an issue to, to do what you described, and of course, if, if that's the case, then.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to make that a condition, frankly, I, I think that's only fair to the neighborhood, having looked at a property that was, um, a good fifteen feet taller, and they were looking at putting a second story on that house, it, it was something that made a big difference, to be able to raise those windows up, and you get still tons of light into the room, you just don't invade somebody else's privacy, and frankly, it goes both ways, the sightline is, is a two-way sightline, so somebody in front of a window is gonna be in full view of, of you and your company in the backyard as well, so I just, I just think it would be far more considerate to make that a condition.
I'm concerned about me walking through my house.
I understand, I understand, exactly, I was trying to be delicate about it.
I started a workout program. I'm concerned about the shock that my new neighbors are going to feel.
Well, I, I, I think making a condition that that be a clerestory window overlooking the adjacent properties where they are significantly higher is, is appropriate, in both sides, in both houses.
Contractor mentioned that, and I'd be very happy with that.
I, I think that would solve the problem.
I'd like to hear what the developer has to say about that, I mean, that's, that could significantly change the, the floor plan, I get, I get what you're saying.
No, it doesn't, no.
Not the floor, it just changes that window.
Just changes out the window.
Yeah, I know, and that significantly changes the room, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
Having several of those windows in my house all along one side of the building because of that.
I, I live in a very tight.
You know, and, and, you know, I live in this, uh, an area where across the street, there's a big window, and it's across the street, but would look right in my house, but what it is, is, it was a raised window, so, I mean, so people, you don't even see their heads when they're, you know, when they're walking by, you know, and stuff, so, I, I mean, if that's possible, that would be, uh, the right thing to do, so, or get a tree that grows really fast.
No, trees don't solve the problem.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
There is another alternative, and that's to eliminate that window on that wall and put a large window on the side where there's no window now, so both sides would have large windows.
On the inside of that room, there, it doesn't go through.
There's a window on one side now.
It doesn't go through.
Window now, and then put a window on the other side, I'm saying.
But that room doesn't go through the whole, the whole.
They've already got a window on one side of that, and.
That's what I'm saying, it's just, that's another option, if, if light is a concern.
And then go to high windows on that side, I, I think that ought to be a condition.
A, a high window would certainly meet my concerns.
So, sorry, the answer?
A high window would meet his concerns.
Oh, okay, right.
A council member, Pierce, if I may, uh, floor plan right here, second story floor plan of Plan A, and the gentleman speaking would be, his property would be here, so you're talking about this window becoming a raised window?
Yes.
And then, um, council member Hayden, you were saying to add a window here?
As another alternative.
As another alternative, I see, okay.
But eliminating that, the.
Eliminating.
Yeah, right.
Eliminating the high window, and just put one on, on the two sides.
Compensate, yeah, provide light into the room.
And that gives them a huge wall also to, to.
This would be the south wall of that second story too, so they would get considered.
Put a window in there and take away the light totally.
Yeah, but both houses have the same issue.
Yeah.
For their adjacent neighbors, so I would suggest that that probably ought to apply to both.
I'd like to hear what the developer has to say on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? This is your chance.
Is the developer here?
Is the developer here?
Hey, can you come up and comment on that window issue, please?
Yeah, it's public comment, yeah, sure.
Yep, you are now.
We're all in this together, trying to make a good project.
Uh, my name's Armin Butici, I'm the developer here, and, uh, we did have a meeting, and I did meet with the neighbors, um, and we talked about these houses two and a half years ago or so, and I did listen to your comment, and I do, do remember talking about that, um, but I think there was another window at the time, I'm not sure, it's been so long, what I could do is look at that window, and, but, but to change it completely to make it up this high.
Yeah.
Um, I think is gonna change that grate room, I don't know yet if we can work out something else between a tree and changing the window, but having a big grate room with a tiny little window at the top may change the house design.
What happens if you put the other window on both sides, on the south side?
Yeah, well, see, it's a, it's a grate room.
Yeah.
So, having the two windows at the side doesn't give you that view of the mountain or whatever side you're looking at.
Is, is there a view coming out that window?
Well, it's a big room.
Well, on his side, there's no view of the mountain.
Yeah.
No, so, but looking at that window and changing it in height to what you're, I think you're envisioning would be in a height of this point, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
You know, as a developer and selling the house, somebody's gonna walk into this great big room and see this little tiny narrow window up there, and having the two adding windows, and it will bring in light, but it won't bring in, and trust me, I don't think anybody's gonna be wanting to look in your room, so maybe we could come up somewhere with the window, I can work with you on a plan.
Not that you're not a handsome man.
No, 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 it's, it's, I, I understand his concerns, I mean, if it was my house, I'd be standing up here too, um, you know, redwood trees, different trees, change the window a little bit, split the window, but making it a slot window in a nine-foot ceiling, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
It's only gonna be a window about this big.
Yeah, it's not a high ceiling, who's a cathedral ceiling, you have a lot more room.
If it was a cathedral ceiling or something different.
I gotta tell you, Howard, I've, I've got a grate room with clerestory windows in it, and there's tons of light, there's a side window that is big window on the side, and it works just great, and frankly, you can arrange the furniture a whole lot easier too.
Great, so also, uh, the, the comment that, that you mentioned before about trees do not give that, I, I, I'll disagree with that statement, because if, what you're saying, if you put redwood trees there, I mean, they're, they're green all and they're full all year round, and.
Well, I grew up in Clayton.
Light coming in.
I grew up here, I, I moved to Clayton in nineteen seventy, my mom and dad live on Southbrook.
Okay.
When we put those houses in, or when they had it built, everybody looked in everybody's yard.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's two-story houses throughout Clayton, and you see in everybody's house, and trees, and over time, you don't see anybody's house anymore, it's, um, I think it's just a, a sign of the times, I mean, changing that window is something I can do.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I just think there's other options than just getting rid of a window in a grate room.
But I, I think it needs to be mitigated out so that everybody's happy about it.
I think you're totally right, and I would do that, somehow, one way or another.
Yeah.
Um, I can work that out somehow.
Well, I mean, that's great that you're willing to.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, I totally get it, I mean, and it's, but looking at that room and kind of thinking about it, I just don't think a slot window's the answer, I think trees, maybe changing the window a little bit, raising it up a little bit, could help.
Trees are gonna destroy the view that you talked about anyway.
Well, not necessarily, you know, the, the tree's twenty-five feet away.
Yeah.
You know, whatever the distance is.
Fifteen feet away, because that's how far your setback is.
Yeah, but see, that, that building, that's set back from the house, and that twenty-five or that fifteen feet or ten feet is from the corner of the house.
Right, so you have twenty-five.
So it, it may be twenty-five feet away.
Well, we just, you know.
And I'm here to definitely work it out, because I totally understand where he, where he's coming from, so.
That's great, that's good, that's the, that's half the battle.
Working together.
Seems to be the only issue we're dealing with here, the rest of the house looks like it's a very nice design.
You know, we, we, we talked to everybody before we designed these houses, to try and come up with a house that fit the neighborhood and looked good for everybody.
Sure.
Before we even started, so.
I think we're gonna have some time before we have to actually approve this with the zoning and the reading and so forth, don't we have a little time that?
Couple weeks.
Possibly could come up with a.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I think that would be good for me, two weeks to work out with the neighbor.
Yeah, we have two weeks to work this out, yeah, at least.
If I may, through the mayor, uh, there's also something for council consideration and the developer, um, instead of shrinking the window, there's also a use of different types of materials, like an opaque glass, maybe the lower half of the window.
Right.
Would use opaque, so you can't see through it, so you'd still have that window feel, but you, and you wouldn't lose the amount of light, but you would still keep the privacy, but.
Let's, let's work it out and come up with some, some plan and bring it back to council in two weeks?
Okay.
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 Yeah, yeah, I don't want to approve it the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for me regarding the houses, landscape?
Great.
Great.
Yeah, it's gonna be a beautiful project, I have to go.
Well, I'll work out the window, we'll figure that one out.
Cool.
Good.
Good.
Thank you very much.
The outreach with the neighbors has obviously been great.
This is, yeah, really good job. Yeah, they came in transit, yeah, this is a good thing, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if that's your direction, staff would recommend you just, uh, uh, make a motion to continue the public hearing to December sixth, and which everything go, yeah, okay, I got it.
You want to move everything to the.
Yeah, I don't want to try to piecemeal and say, well, is this one okay to go, is that one okay to go? Let's just do it as a package.
Okay.
Keith, you seconded that, right?
Yeah, seconded.
All right.
Now, recognize, December sixth is your reorganization meeting, and by continuing to that time, you will have cake later in the evening.
What?
It's okay, we do it before.
That'll cut down the discussion.
Okay, we had a motion in the second hour.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm against it, it's my real, no, oh, no, I'm for it, I'm for it. Okay, so we're gonna get done with that, okay?
Thank you all for your consideration on that, we really appreciate that.
I do like that everybody's working together.
Yeah, I do too, anybody wants to come look at clerestory windows that are twenty feet wide, let me know.
Good job, Malon.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, action items, item number eight, we have none, um, city council, items limited directive for future meetings, none, okay, we have a, a closed session, I, Gary, um, can I ask one que, we, we have a, we have a closed session, item number ten, and then we go back to, uh, uh, item number eleven?
That's correct.
Is that in that sequence for a reason, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I would just.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
Okay, I, I, I know, but I don't, didn't, I did, okay, so we're gonna go to closed session.
Per government.
Per government code, section five four nine five six dot nine D two, significant exposure to litigation, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one case. All right, we're gonna report out from closed session, and, uh.
There's, there's no reportable action, and we can go into item eleven A directly.
I was gonna say, golly gee, give a, give a man a chance, you know? Okay, we're gonna go to item, uh, action item number eleven A, consider authorizing the mayor to execute amendment to the Oak Creek Canyon tolling agreement between the City of Clayton and the West Coast Home Builders to extend the limitation period to file a legal challenge, and we're gonna go to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Geller, we received a request from West Home, uh, West Coast Home Builders asking for an extension on the tolling agreement, which is going to expire tomorrow for an additional six months, um, and so that is what is before you, they have submitted an application pursuant to the tolling agreement, it hasn't been deemed complete, they believe they can submit additional, um, surveys and information within the next sixty days so that it could be deemed complete, and they feel that they can, um, have the application be deemed complete and considered within the one hundred and eighty day period, so, the request that is before you is to either authorize the city attorney or the, or the city manager to execute an extension of the tolling agreement by a hundred and eighty days.
By six, six.
I believe it's, the request is to have the mayor execute.
Something from the mayor to do that, maybe, maybe not, you never know, okay, um, do we have any comments up here, any discussion, no?
Opportunity for public comment.
I have to open up public comment first before I could do that, Julie?
Okay.
Okay, so open up for public comment.
Good evening, council, uh, my name is Kevin English, I'm the director of the Department of the West Coast Home Builders, and I'm working with, uh, your staff, Mindy in particular, on the supplemental application.
Turn your microphone on if you would.
Oh, you must have turned it off, huh?
Is that better?
Yeah, you don't have to go over it again, just keep going.
Okay, my vo, my voice was mildly loud enough, okay, uh, anyways, we've been working with, uh, uh, Mindy, your staff, and, uh, getting all the required supplemental application documents in, and, uh, last time we sat over the counter and delivered the additional documents, she felt that there was, uh, enough to keep the process moving forward, uh, regardless